Communications, which would be between five and items five and six. So with that changed, I need a motion to approve the audit. I'll make that motion as amended. Thank you. And a second please.
A second.
Thank you. And all in favor say aye. Oppose? Okay. We have one item coming out of executive session tonight. I've got a statement here that I'd like to read tonight. While district auditors continue to review reimbursement and vendor records, the board has directed district council to initiate such proceedings as are necessary and appropriate to recover any overpayment or unauthorized payments to former superintendent Gill. While district auditors continue to review reimbursement and vendor records, the board has directed district council to initiate such proceedings as necessary and appropriate to recover any overpayments or unauthorized payments to former superintendent Gill. All right, moving on. Next item we have is our good news reports.
We have several winter sports good news, and they include we have great success with our girls' basketball teams that are regional champs. GHS student Sam Butler qualified for state in wrestling and has also beat the number of wins for the school. It was a school record in his season. And we also have, we also have GHS student Stuart Holm who qualified for state at the state swim meet, and Lenwood Dance Team who qualified for the state competition. And also congratulations to the GMS volleyball team for their third place finish in the county tournament. And Cho choir continues to do quite well. They just had a grand champion on Saturday at their invitational at Southeast High School. So they continue, this is the middle of their competition season two. So they're all doing very well. Yeah, combo and best vocals and best choreography. There you go.
Anybody else?
That's the good news.
All right. All right, now's the opportunity for visitors to address the board concerning any agenda topic tonight. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving right along to our auditor's report. Oh, there you are. Okay. And just let me say, you know, we all have a copy of the auditor's report in front of us tonight.
Hey, I'm Robin Yaki from Mojaki Ground and Pool in Shelbyville, Illinois. And I'm here this evening to present the audit for the year ended June 30, 2012. In your report, you'll have the independent auditor's report. And just so you're familiar with it and understand what that states, one opinion states except for the emissions of disclosures required for other post-employment benefits, the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with Illinois State Board of Education guidelines or on the regulatory basis. The other opinion included in the financial statements states that the financial statements are not presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and this is consistent with prior years. And this opinion is necessary as the financial statements are available through the Freedom of Information Act and may be read by those not familiar with regulatory reporting. The financial statements to provide an overview reflect a decrease in cash investments in the operating funds. And be reminded, the operating funds, when we're looking at this and for financial profile purposes, are the education fund, the operations and maintenance, transportation, and working cash. So there was a decrease in cash investments in the operating funds of $2.2 million from the prior year, and a decrease in fund balances in the operating funds of $2.5 million from the prior year. Receipts were level from 2011 to '12 in the operating funds, while expenditures increased $4 million. It should be noted that in accordance with the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, the increase in expenditures does include the entire $1.5 million virtual desktop project, even though only a portion of that was paid for during the year. That whole project is required to be shown as capital outlet and does complete the expenditure total. Two district funds that are not operating funds, the municipal retirement and capital projects, both report negative cash and fund balances. As a result of these factors, the district's annual financial profile designation, or what we call the score, is a 2.65 out of four, which is considered warning status. The decline in the financial profile score is a result of the decline in three out of five factors used to calculate the score. First factor being fund balance to revenue ratio and expenditures to revenue ratio. And those two factors are the weighted factors in the score. And then also as a result, the day's cash on hand did decline. From an operational standpoint, we reviewed compliance with laws and regulations and also internal controls and noted the following. Reconciliations in cash investment accounts were not prepared timely. The bank reconciliations showed that individual funds had overdrawn their share of commingled checking accounts or cash accounts, resulting in unauthorized inter-fund loans. We found internal controls over debt services lacking. Interest and principal payments were not recorded in accordance with the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, and the $1.5 million capital lease for the virtual desktop infrastructure was not reflected in the general ledger. We noted the district did not have a process to track the status of prior year audit findings. The payroll liabilities were not reconciled to supporting documentation. There were numerous coding transactions where transactions were not classified in accordance with the Illinois Program Accounting Manual. A deficiency in the approval of travel and expense reimbursements was noted, and expenditures materially exceeded budgeted amounts in three funds. Our audit also included a separate audit of federal programs, or what is referred to as a single audit. The district expended approximately $2.00 million in federal funds, and once an entity expends more than $500,000, you are required to have this single audit. The single audit resulted in two findings and recommendations that were both related to the child nutrition programs. In addition, we made some other additional recommendations that are included in a separate letter in your audit report, and these include a recommended review of outstanding items on district bank reconciliations, maintenance of property records, and consistency in payroll posting periods. We did review throughout the audit and at the conclusion of the audit, review all these comments with management, and they have responded to each one of these findings. And the responses included on the individual schedule of findings and question costs included in your audit. That is a summary, a brief summary of about 90 pages of your audit report. And lastly, we would like to thank the district staff for their cooperation and performance in our audit.
I guess I'll ask, is there anything in this audit that you would find unusual for school district? Or is this a, I mean, there were some findings of concern, I understand.
Findings of concern, and just probably the decrease in the financial profile score.
Compared to last year, how does this look?
Last year, the district was a 3.8 out of four, which was financial recognition status. And there are four levels in the profile score. The first is recognition, the second is review, and then you have warning, and then you have a watch list. So we did go down two steps. And like I said, there was a decrease, an obvious decrease in cash and fund balances district line.
If the state had met its full financial obligation to us, would that have resulted in a steep decrease of like this?
It's going to increase several of the factors. What it would be, we'd have to look at the individual by category, what those payments would be. But definitely, like I said, revenues were level from year to year, and had additional revenues been received from the state of Illinois, it would have impacted everything. Cash investments, results of operations, and all the factors included in the financial profile score.
Regarding internal operations, things that the district is doing, compare, can you compare this year to last year?
We had several repeat findings, and then there were several findings and recommendations that we had last year that are not included this year. So there was improvement made in some areas, but then there were additional issues here just with complete staffing changes in the accounting part.
Carrie, can you comment on that?
On which part?
On the response, kind of the issues and the repeat issues from last year.
Yeah, and those are, what we're trying to do is remember our staff up front has changed over quite a bit, and this is an FY12, so, you know, review. So we're looking at making sure that we have things in place that Robin has spent a great deal of time working on and did a very thorough job of the audit, to make sure that we're fixing the errors, fixing the things that were issues in the past. And so, you know, it's been a learning curve for everyone in our business section of our office that needs to, you know, make sure that we are continuing to follow those, the I-PAM, the Program Accounting Manual, to make sure that they're adding to the ledger. But it's a learning process, and it was one that we're going to continue to make sure that we are spending a great deal of time and attention on.
I kind of put that in the category of the growing pains. We've gone from a smaller district, 20, with a bookkeeper, to a big district with a financial audit. I still think we're catching up with some of the bureaucratic growing pains that are involved in that, but...
And part of that was, too, the use of Skyward for a lot more than it used to be, where everything used to be pretty much accounted for in a, you know, on a ledger rather than computerized systems. So a lot of what we've done now has been more automated, and that was part of our growing pains, absolutely.
Because we don't yet have that kind of goal-oriented superintendent evaluation process really put in. If we did, I would, you know, I would hope that that could be one goal, is to improve the audit year to year, so we can kind of eliminate some of the minor, more minor kind of discrepancies in how the bureaucracy works.
But the financial profile status is, you know, we need to make our, we're going to talk more about our budget reductions that are required because of our status and where we are as a district. And so it just is another piece of information that we know was, we knew was coming, and we knew that we were getting to that point. And in this district, we've never really had to be at that point, and this is something that's new to us, and we're going to have to make those reductions.
I'd like to brought that up, because that would be your second goal, is to fix that now.
The profile status, absolutely. Which is why we have the presentation later on today.
Any other questions or comments?
What a question. People in the back half can't hear.
Okay, we're going to see if we can take care of the microphone.
I don't think anybody heard anything on the audit, and especially people can't see. We're not hearing anything to be discussed.
We're going to see if we can get the microphone going.
Does it just from the, can you hear us? You just can't hear the presenters? You can't hear us either?
All right. There's no other questions? Thank you, Robin. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go back then to consent agenda items. Is there anyone who...
Excuse me, I'm breaking every rule, but I think what the auditor had to say was very important. Could that be repeated? The people in this room need to hear things like this. It's very important.
Can I have her come back and just summarize?
Correct.
With the microphone working?
I think it's going to work. Can you hear me right there? Okay. What do you want me to start? Just with the financial statement summary? Is that okay? Okay, the financial statements reflect a decrease in cash and investments in the operating funds. The financial statements reflect a decrease in cash and investments in the operating funds, and as I explained, the operating funds are the educational fund, the operations and maintenance, transportation, and working cash. They reflect a decrease in cash investments of $2.2 million from the prior year and a decrease in fund balance in the operating funds of $2.5 million from the prior year. Receipts were level from 2011 to 2012 in the operating funds, while expenditures increased $4 million. It should be noted that in accordance with the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, the increase in expenditures is inflated because the entire $1.5 million virtual desktop project was required to be included in expenditures, even though only a $317,573 payment was made on this capital lease in fiscal year '12. In addition, two district funds that are not operating funds, the municipal retirement and the capital projects funds, report negative cash and negative fund balances. The district's annual financial profile designation and score is a 2.65 out of a possible four, which is a warning status. The decline in the financial profile score is a result in the decline in three out of the five factors used to calculate the score. First factor is fund balance to revenue, and the second is the expenditures to revenue. These are weighted factors used in the calculation of the score. In addition, the day's cash on hand also decreased. Do you want me to go through the recommendations again? Findings?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Our procedures resulted in several findings and recommendations to management, including reconciliations of cash and investment accounts were not prepared timely. The bank reconciliations showed that individual funds had overdrawn their share of commingled cash accounts, resulting in unauthorized loans between the funds. We found internal controls over debt services transactions lacking. Interest and principal payments were not recorded in accordance with the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, and that $1.5 million capital lease for the virtual desktop transaction was not reported in the general ledger. We noted that the district did not have a process to track the status of prior year audit findings. Payroll liabilities were not reconciled to supporting documentation. Numerous transactions were not classified in accordance with the Illinois Program Accounting Manual. A deficiency in the approval of travel and expense reimbursements was noted, and expenditures materially exceeded budgeted amounts in three funds. Our audit also included a separate audit, which is called a single audit, which is a separate audit on federal programs. Anytime an entity expends more than $500,000 in federal funds, the single audit is required. The district expended approximately $2.1 million in federal funds. The single audit resulted in two findings and recommendations to management that were both related to the child nutrition programs. We made additional recommendations that are included in a separate letter in the audit report. These matters include a review of outstanding items on district bank reconciliations, maintenance of property records, and consistency in payroll posting periods. We reviewed throughout the course of the audit engagement and at the conclusion of our audit, all of the above matters with management, and management provided a response to each issue raised. These responses are included on the individual schedule of findings and question costs included in the audit.
Thank you, Robin. No other questions or comments on that, other than what we had? Okay. We'll then go to our consent agenda items. I have six on the agenda, and is there anybody who wishes to pull out anything in our consent agenda items for individual consideration? If not, then I need a motion then to approve items six one through six nine in the consent agenda item. And the consent agenda items as presented in your board packet. Thank you, Steve. And a second please.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Let's see, we call the roll please.
Quetter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weisel? Yes. Carter? Yes. Cox?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Nuses?
Yes. Next item we have is personnel consent agenda items, items seven one through seven fifteen. Is there anybody who wishes to pull any one of those out for individual consideration?
I'd like to pull seven point two.
Seven point two, resignation of our GMS principal. Okay, we'll do that. Anything else? Seven point three, resignation of our GHS associate principal. Okay. Anything else? If not, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented in your board packet, minus seven two and seven three. Thank you, John. And a second please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Let's see, we call the roll please.
Weisel? Yes. Carter? Yes. Cox?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quetter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Nuses?
Yes. Item seven two, resignation of our GMS principal. Linda, would you like to come?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Cox on being appointed the superintendent of Carlton School District. I know she will do a great job. Carol, Carolyn. Carrie and I were at Ball Elementary together some 24 years ago. I remember sitting next to her when she got her first principalship. She'll do a great job. She'll be an asset to that district, and we will meet, we will miss her smile and her enthusiasm for our district. But it'll be nice if some other district will be able to benefit from her experience.
Okay, then we'll go to item seven two now. Linda, you want to make the motion then to approve her resignation?
Yes. I move that we accept the resignation of Dr. Carrie Cox, GMS principal.
Thank you. And a second please.
Second.
Thank you. And let's see, we call the roll please.
Carter? Yes. Cox?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quetter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weisel? Yes. Nuses?
Yes. The next item we have is the resignation of our associate principal at the high school.
I just wanted to say a special thank you to Mr. Becker from Sherpiece here this evening. And for his service to the district and service to my family. So thank you and best of luck in your new position.
Motion then to accept the resignation of our GHS associate principal. Thank you, Lisa. And a second please.
Hi, second.
Thank you, Linda. And call the roll please.
Weisel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quetter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
And Nuses?
Yes. Moving along, we, our next item is old business, and under old business, we have one item tonight, and that's budget reductions.
In the nine months that I have been officially your superintendent, we've faced some very difficult challenges. We're now facing one of the most difficult challenges I think any board can make. The reductions you're about to vote on are painful, but small in comparison to the cuts that we're going to have to make in the future if we don't do anything now. You know, it's much like family finances. If we don't reduce spending now, when spending, you know, is much more than what we're receiving in revenues, there's a bigger price to pay later. So, you know, what, in terms of what we have as a district, if we choose not to reduce the $3 million in a proposed plan, we'll be forced to reduce far, far more in the future, and those, those cuts would definitely have an impact on students. We're doing our best, bringing the recommendations tonight that have a minimal impact to students or their learning in the district. We have a reputation at Ball Chatham for high standards. We have an amazing support staff, teachers, administrators, parents, community, and we have great students. We realize that these cuts that we're asking administrators and teachers and support staff to, to take on are going to increase the workload and are going to mean that we have to do more with less. But we know that it's, it's an impact on the legacy of the district that is so important and so critical, that we pass a balanced budget, that we live within our means, and that we go forward from this point. It doesn't mean that it's easy, and it doesn't mean that, you know, these conversations aren't very difficult to have to have, but as you know, we've done things such as reducing administrators. We've also frozen our salaries. We have asked that, that people take on more, more than they have in the past. We've asked that the community step in and help us with some of our programming. So these are, these are conversations that we, I'll go through individually, the reduction plan, but I just wanted to start by saying that this has been, this has been very difficult, not only on the administration, but I know on the board as well, to make these, these recommendations and to look at making these cuts in our budget. I think there's a lot at stake here that we have going forward, knowing that we have to live within our means, like I said. I've tried to live up to my philosophy and my promise to our district when I took this position of being as transparent as possible. It hasn't been easy, because these are difficult things to look up to our staff members and to tell them that there may not be a position for them the next year. And I say that with all sincerity, that this is, this has been very difficult on all of us. But we know that it's a district that we all love and that we want to see sustained. We want to see our district be able to do well. And so we know that that's, that's our responsibility. It's never been more, more important now, than now, to maintain fiscal health. And these are tough decisions to have to make, but, but we know that we have to talk through each, each one of them. So I think, I think I'd like to go through each one individually. Thank you. Starting with a timeline. And I, I kind of talked about some of these at our last board meeting. And really, the conversation started in spring 2012, knowing that, you know, I was taking this role on. I had some conversations with our, with our staff as well as our administrators about reducing our, our budget, reducing our spending in terms of supply budgets and zero-based balance, or zero-based budgeting. And at that point, then, we had some conversations about allowing our elementary class sizes to increase slightly. And what we had always done in the past, previous years, we had always increased class size, or we... size, or we had increased the number of teachers. We had hired teachers in the spring, knowing that there would be potential for students to come in the fall. And instead, this year, we waited until we needed those students, which meant we did grow beyond what we had actually planned. We did get a couple of our class sizes, a couple, a couple of our grade levels grew beyond what we actually had, what we had planned for. And then we hired back a teacher, a part-time teacher, to cover some of, some of that additional enrollment that we received. So, when, in July, then, we became very entrenched in the conversations with the entire administrative team. We began brainstorming and had lots and lots of discussion about what the budget cuts might be. And then we presented in January at the board meeting, the proposed changes. And then, since then, we've met with the negotiations team, the VCA negotiations team, to have some more conversation as well. Typically, what's hard about this process is that typically, we try to be very collaborative in the district, and this is one that it's been, it's very difficult to be collaborative, because these are impacts to individuals as well as to their peers. And so, it's difficult to have as much conversation on action teams or, you know, with teams of teachers or teams of support staff or teams of administrators, because there are a lot of decisions that have to be made at the district level, and that's something that's kind of out of our comfort zone typically. The, the goal has been to share the impact over many, many areas and to absorb the least amount of impact to students. And as I, as I mentioned when I started, that if we don't make these reductions this year, we know that we're going to have to have deeper cuts in the future. So, it's kind of an if-then scenario, and we know that, that that means if we don't reduce now, we will have less to invest, we'll have less, we'll be relying on short-term borrowing to make payroll, which we actually know that we're going to have to this spring. If we have to do that, then obviously, then we're paying interest on whatever we have to borrow. So, it's not healthy for an organization to not be able to balance deficit budgets. And so, we're, our attempt is to balance our budget and have the least amount of impact to students. Just a review of the things that have been already discussed. As you know, we reduced two administrative positions. We've frozen our, the district-wide administrative salaries. We are talking about in the future, which there would be future savings to salary ranges or caps for administrators. That, you know, there are several other things that we've done, such as professional organizations, reducing some cell phones. If you want to slide forward, okay. The facilities area, I'm going through these fairly quickly, because these have already been presented at the last board meeting, but there, there are some stipends and some supplies that we have reduced back, some summer savings that we've looked at how we can, you know, where we offer our summer school programs and what buildings we need to close down and save on for utilities. In terms of staffing modifications, as we know, the, the large majority of our budget, 81% of our budget is in, in the ed fund, is, is the salaries and benefits. So, when we're looking at staffing, when we're looking at balancing a budget, when you're looking at balancing, you have to, you have to have conversations about staffing. And so, what we've talked about was, our recommendation is that we would ask our teachers at the high school to teach six sections and to increase the minimum class size to 15. It used to be 10 for a class to go. Now, there are times that, that it may be smaller than that, such as a special ed setting, or if you have an AP class that, let's say that the teacher, not having that teacher teach that section, wouldn't necessarily mean a savings to the district, because that teacher has an ability in their schedule to have that class. We may let some of those classes go, and we've had some conversations with the administrative team about specifically which classes we would offer for next year, now that we have the full course enrollment data for what students have selected. We've also proposed eliminating the library aide positions, retaining our librarians, but eliminating those positions. We're recommending the reduction of the team leaders at the middle school and high school, as well as a secretarial position at the high school. At the middle school, the, the additional course that would be taught, that is recommended to be taught, it would be the elimination of the PLC, which used to be called GPT. And then, the staff members would teach an additional course. With those, though, if you'll notice at the top bullet, as well as this bullet, that we would, we're proposing, recommending that we have paraprofessionals cover study hall, and that would be in addition. So, you have to, you know, think about the fact that we're, we're going to have to add that back in the budget, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. But having our paraprofessionals cover study halls would be a savings in the budget. We also are talking about athletics, and I'll get to details about that in just a In addition, we're recommending a 2.5 reduction in hall monitor positions, as well as we have some staff members who have extended day contracts. What you'll see listed are their current days, number of days that they work, and then the proposed or the recommended number of days. We also have some, some recommendations that we had looked at, extracurricular clubs. When we analyzed the extracurricular clubs, we looked at enrollment, as well as some of the clubs are, have a competitive piece to them that we know is important for students on their transcripts or their applications to college. So, we, we looked at those when we're talking about reducing clubs. We looked at which might have a competitive piece to them, so that students would be able to use it on applications to, to college. So, then we also have decided that we will not purchase new buses. We talked about freshman advantage, and, you know, this was one where we were really trying to think outside the box. And currently, we hire back our staff to, to come to freshman advantage. We hire back some staff, and instead, to have a savings, we looked at having the freshman advantage, the eighth graders come over during the final exams at the high school, so that they could see, number one, it would, there's a savings, but also the fact that we could have all eighth graders participate, which currently, we get a pretty good turnout, but we don't get all students. And so, it would be a nice, we thought, way to make sure that we had all students. We would bus them over during exams. And then we'd also have quite a few staff members there, and we could even, you know, look to feed the students lunch or have them go through, you know, what might look like their, in their day. We have talked about also reducing, the, the next bullet is really about the number of seats that we have at SAS Ed Central and not paying for more seats than we need currently. So, in our contract, we tell them ahead of time how many seats we think we'll need, and because we're able to meet our students' needs here in the district, we've been able to reduce that number, as well as, we know that we don't want to, like I said, pay for a seat at SAS Ed Central and pay tuition for students when we don't, when we don't need that. So, we're talking about reducing that, that back. This next list is actually one that, most of those that I just reviewed were, I went through them pretty quickly, because those were presented at the January board meeting. The athletic reductions, we had just had a blanket number that we came up with, and after more conversations with our, with our athletic departments, we've, we've come down to a more specific list. And I'll go through them individually. At GIS and GMS, on the left-hand side, you'll see that it's, we're recommending that we reduce sixth grade bas, excuse me, sixth grade baseball, and, which means that you can eliminate a, one assistant coach position. Sixth grade softball. Seventh and eighth grade, remember, are the, where you see white teams listed, were the athletic improvement plan, where we, several years ago, decided to go ahead and add another team of, of players. And what we've done at this point was to really try to have some conversations with the community. Our athletic director has had some conversations with, Ryan Green has had some conversations with the community, rec leagues, about, you know, creating some partnerships, creating some, can we, let's say, offer uniforms? Because we have the uniforms, can we allow YBA to use our uniforms and help them set a schedule and have them take over the basketball program? So, those are conversations that continue to go on, but again, it's really, I think that the one highlight to these kinds of conversations is that you can see that there is community support and there's community collaboration when you get to this point of having to have conversations about reductions. We're also talking about some additional assistant coach position reductions. At the high school, and stop me if I, if you have any questions about any of them. At the high school, they're, they were looking at, again, reductions in assistant coaches. They, the goal for all of these is to see if there were ways that we could have, you know, have, reduce our budget, however, still give lots of opportunities for students to participate when they want, when they chose to. Part of what you'll see on the, the high school reductions is that they have recommended that they can use some of their camp funds to cover some of their supply costs. And the weightlifting stipends are weightlifting supervision, and they currently have, in several seasons, they have two supervisors of the weight, of the, when the students are in the lifting, and they have suggested or recommended that that be reduced to one person, so that you still can have that opportunity for students, but to reduce that, part of that budget.
Is the YBA amenable to CSBI?
CBSI and YBA have been, Mr. Green reported that it's, it's been a really good conversation with them. They're still asking us questions about, you know, how can this work and what can they, you know, what kind of help they can get from the district, but absolutely, I think it's been a really positive conversation, from what I understand, that, that they, you know, have, have come together and said, let's, let's talk over this. So, they have, they have a great program now. I mean, you know, I know many of us have had our children in, in those programs, and they're already very strong programs. And so, we're fortunate in this district that we have such strong community recreational programs and that we have so many parents involved as volunteers in those programs. So, that's something that we think is, is a real positive for the district. Are there other questions about, because this is fairly new? Do you want, the others are somewhat reviews, but any other questions about athletics?
Can I ask a question? Are these reductions temporary? And, or, or as financial recovery takes place, will they be added back in as the district recovers financially? Or is this a permanent decision at this point?
Permanent decision at this point, and if we could hold questions, please, from, from everybody, because we've got a lot of stuff to go through, we can maybe address some of these individually after reading tonight. So, but it, it is a permanent, we are not looking at returning these costs at any time in the near future.
She may ask her question at the end when any-
Yes, she can. Yes, she can.
Okay. Don't misrepresent the situation.
Thank you.
There are points at the beginning or the end of the board meeting. At the beginning of the board meeting, you can ask questions about anything on the agenda, and then at the end of the board meeting is when you can follow up with any questions.
I misunderstood that.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Carrie? Yes. Will you address the white teams and the difficulty in scheduling competitive events and how they might-
Right.
-be appropriate place for the event?
Right. And, and you'll notice that if you, you know, as you, we've been kind of watching the other budget cuts that other districts have made as well, we've noticed that there are other teams or other districts that are cutting, let's say, sixth grade, some, I've heard of some that are cutting entire sixth grade programs. And so, we know that sometimes it becomes difficult to schedule, to schedule games anyway, and so, we, you know, that's part of what went into our conversations was, you know, were there games? Was it, was there an ability to, to offer a schedule, a full schedule? Or, you know, was it becoming difficult for us to have a full schedule when some of the other school districts are starting to cut, especially in the sixth grade? We're seeing a lot of, of reductions there, you know, so that, that has impacted our, our conversations.
Can I borrow the mic and just kind of express my- I was going to wait till the end, because I, I don't want my concerns to just be about athletics. I just, just overall, as much about just extracurricular activities in general as it is to the white teams at, at GMS. But, and in general, I, I don't want to be lost. I mean, all of this, this funding crunch is, I, I, there are some audit concerns, and Carrie has promised us in the, in the years that come, those audit concerns will be addressed. I, I attribute those, again, to kind of a growing district. We've gone from a district with a, with a bookkeeper to, to a bigger district where that just doesn't work anymore. But, but in gen, I don't, I don't want to minimize those, but in general, the big funding concern is the lack of the state giving us funding that, that, that all, and it's not just our school district, it's all school districts deserve. So, it's the lack of state funding that we're trying to deal with here, not, not, not inappropriate spending from prior years. And with that lack of state funding, it becomes these stresses. Now, in general, my concern in the past, at, we know that at GMS, we've got two of the largest, the largest seventh grade, or almost the largest seventh grade and almost largest eighth grade class in the state, so that our kids in middle school can't compete, don't have the chance of competing or being on an athletic team as they would at a smaller middle school. And we understand that, and I think this is probably a reasonable compromise in, in making the best out of the situation. But I would ask that we would continue, we, we've always had a priority of participation in the middle school and, and sportsmanship and teamwork, so that I would hope that with just one athletic team per grade, that they would try to maximize that idea. Over, over just winning games or winning tournaments, is that the, the priority be participation and teamwork of the, of say, instead of having 10 and 10 on a white team and a red team, that we would have, I think the maximum would be then 15 on a, on the new team. But, but that we make it clear that the priority for us is still participation in athletics and in all extracurricular activities. When you look at the 2009 21st Century Education Recommendations, I mean, they recommended having a strong core curriculum, but then the extracurricular activities, including athletics, was an important supplemental part of the education. And I, and I don't think that's lost on any one of us, and we're just going to try to do, do the best we can with the funding that we have.
I think that's a really good point, and, you know, when you refer to the, the reason that we're here and the, the issues that we face in the state and the, the lack of funding, we do have a, a report too later with, you know, the Patrick Murphy's going to present on, you know, what, what exactly that looks like. So, some more details about exactly that issue. In terms of extracurricular clubs, again, we have, we have quite a few, and I didn't list the ones that we, the clubs that we still have in place with these reductions. There are quite a few that we have in place for students, lots of opportunities for them to be involved. But when we looked at extracurricular clubs, the goal was to analyze, again, enrollment and participation, as well as, are there other clubs that are similar to these offerings? And so, can we, can we see if there's a way for students to participate in something similar to that? And that was part of the reasons, they're part of what we planned when we looked at these reductions. For example, the fall play, we still will offer our spring musical, that is, but the fall play has a smaller participation rate. Any questions about the clubs? You know, one of the things that, as we, as we went through the budget, you know, there are lots and lots of ways to, to try to balance a budget, but to try to do so without impacting students or to have a, the most, the least impact to students possible and the biggest impact to the budget overall, is, is a difficult task. But thinking outside the box has helped us a little bit in terms of, like I mentioned, the freshman advantage and, and talking about, can we offer that during exams and making sure that all students are included? Maybe that's an extra bonus to that change, that we can actually make sure that all, all of our students are participating in that, in that type of orientation. I mentioned also that we're talking about covering study halls with paraprofessionals and that being a way of thinking outside the box to, you know, to also find a way for some of our aides, so, for example, our library aides to offer, you know, that this may be a potential for, would you be interested in pursuing something such as this? Because it's not our hope that, or it's not our, one of our concerns has been making sure that, can we, can we release the least amount of people, too? You know, obviously, our first goal is to balance budget and to make sure that we impact students in the least, you know, with the, the least impact possible, but also to find places for our, for our staff to stay in the district. And so, you know, when we looked at, is there a possibility for some of our, some of our staff who would be released otherwise on an honorable dismissal, could we find places for them to come back to the district? And so, those are conversations that we've, we've started, but those are things that we want to continue to, to pursue. The, and we mentioned the collaboration with the community athletic rec programs that we want to continue those conversations, too. And then, the final, the final kind of outside-the-box thinking that we've had lately is, and this was one that was brought up to us, actually, from a staff member, who said, have you considered giving a retirement incentive to people for certified people who are staff members who are eligible for retirement? And to be honest, we hadn't really thought about that, that concept. about that that concept. We kind of think in terms of what does the contract say? What does it allow us to do currently? So we started exploring this incentive and said, you know, let's think about that. Let's think about how that might help the district as well as help someone who's preparing to retire, is eligible to retire and just hasn't chosen to do so yet. So we've had some conversations, initial, very initial conversations. So nothing's written in stone yet, but with our BCA leaders to say that, okay, if we would find a way for, let's say that someone is at the top end of a salary schedule, a teacher is at the top end of salary schedule, and then we can we can find someone on our RIF list that is, you know, at the other end of the salary schedule, if we're replacing them with a newer staff member, there's obviously a savings to the district. Can we give a stipend? Can we give an amount to that to that member to retire? Give them an incentive? And then the district, the goal would be that the district would save money and that the person could choose then to pursue their retirement and take that incentive, as well as we could pull someone off of the RIF list. So these are very initial conversations at this point that we've started to have. And we've started to kind of drill into what those numbers would look like. But at this point, we know that there are there are a possibility of about eight people, we think, may be impacted by that. And, you know, this may be one of the times that this is most attractive to our staff members who are eligible to retire. And when I say eligible to retire, I meant, I mean, those folks who wouldn't incur an ERO penalty or a very small ERO penalty. So ER, the early retirement option. And when we talk about that, you have to remember that, you know, clearly in the media, in the news, we all know that there is a potential for a very strong likelihood that COLA, at the state level, that our COLA increases for retirement in TRS as well as, you know, healthcare benefits are going to be somehow changed. And so if there are people who are, you know, if we have staff members who are eligible to retire, that may be a very good incentive for them to take that because of the possibility of those changes that are happening in legislation. We just don't know exactly what that will look like yet. So as they're watching the state legislators make those decisions, it may be a time that in the past, this incentive may not have been as attractive, but this year, it may be very attractive to some because of the possibility of major changes in our TRS system and the pension reform. So on the next slide, okay, if you'll click just once. What I, so what I listed up here was that, again, we're trying to think outside the box. We're trying to find ways to, you know, have a small impact to students, balance the budget, get back, gain back some of our reserves so we can start building that reserve back. Because as we all know, that that's the only way to become healthy again, is to build those reserves back. But then also to think about, how can we keep the staff here? How can we reduce that RIF list that we know we're going to have? We originally, when we talked about general numbers, and I'm talking about certified staff, we talked about, we thought that it might be around 17 positions. When you, when we looked at course selection data, when we looked at what specifically, you know, these 10 students want to take accounting, these 20 students want to take, you know, so when we look at those course selection data and then we plug them into the schedule, there are actually 24 and a half positions that that would be eliminated. Now, there are, that includes adding two elementary positions back into the mix. So taking two elementary positions, we know that, like I said earlier, that our class sizes are higher than what we are accustomed to. We know that we need to add those couple of positions back in so that we can reduce those class sizes. So if you'll click again, Betsy. There are 14 positions currently that we know of, about 14. And these are, these are estimates. These can change as we're looking at our numbers. But we have about 14 positions that we believe at this point will be absorbed through people that we know are ready or resign or resigning or retiring. And so if you subtract those out, then keep going. Okay. And then we have, then we come to a list of our honorable dismissals because obviously you want to first absorb your resignations and retirements. So then we have what might be called a RIF list or an honorable dismissal list of 10 and a half positions. And if you'll click again. So the retirement incentive bonus that I mentioned, the possibility of a post-retirement incentive bonus would, there are, there are about eight people that may be given that option. If all eight of them choose, then then our RIF list becomes two and a half people, two and a half positions, two and a half that are that are riffed overall. So, you know, the nice part about that is we were talking about, you know, when we first started having these conversations, it was about, we thought we'd have a list of about 17 people. Then we thought, you know, it really looks like about 24 and a half positions. And when you look at all of these outside of the box kind of thinking, as well as absorbing some retirements and making sure that, what that means though, is that you have to, anytime you have RIFs, you have to, you have some transfer because, you know, you might have someone who's certified to do this position, but they're going to bump someone in this position. So we really look at certifications and what each certified staff member is able to teach. And when we start doing that, there's a little bit of shifting. But when it boils down to it, if we can get to a point where we're at, you know, a handful or less of, you know, teachers that we're going to have to put on an honorable dismissal list, it's a much, much better picture than what we had originally thought because we're starting to think about about other options for what else could we do? Are there any questions about that? Like I mentioned, at this point, that's a, that's a very early conversation. What our goal would be is to to have some conversations with those eight people who, and there may be more, as we look at the numbers and we start to to identify the parameters of who could, who could be part of that incentive bonus plan. And we look at, you know, who, how it could save the district money and help reduce our RIF list. As we look more at those details, we're going to start having individual conversations because that would be something that the individual would be able to select. We can't tell someone to retire. We can't tell them not to retire. So that would be something that would be an individual choice. And at this point, we haven't gotten to that point of releasing that information. And we're hoping that we can have some some pretty serious conversations between now and March 11th when we do have to release the RIF list. Because we'd rather not have to release people and put them on a RIF list if we think we can, we can pull them back into the system. So.
I think there was some questions.
Hang on. Can you hang on to your questions? And Sylvia? Okay. If you'll pull up, Betsy, the, I think I might have left that up too. The other documents that are in the board docs that are part of the, okay, there it is. Public documents are, this one is one that is a spreadsheet that we had presented back in January and just have updated. Like I said, if, you know, if you look at the savings, the positions, those 24.5 positions, that's a $1.35 million savings to the district. Now, remember that before it was, we were talking about $850,000, but that was when we were talking about 15 to 17 positions. And it was just a blanket number of, we gave an average of $50,000. Now we know specifically who those people are. When we look at our RIF list and we start plugging in who that, who those 24 and a half positions are, we know specifically how much that will be. So we have a better number and it's at 1.35 million. But then right below that, you'll notice that I had to pull out from the savings $150,000 because if we're going to pull in, if we're going to add, because we're not having our certified staff oversee the general study halls and have certified staff do that, if we're going to add those certified staff positions, then we're going to need to, you know, that takes that $150,000 out because that's another additional positions that we need to add to the budget. So this is the overall list and we, you'll notice at the bottom that we are just just at our $3 million goal. You know, it fluctuates somewhat because some of these numbers are estimates, but at this point, it's it's much more clear than what we had had at the January presentation. At the bottom, there is a reference to increased fees. We've looked at minimally increasing fees for for registration. We're trying not to make that a large impact on parents, but a small impact so that we can increase our, that's really the only way that the district can increase revenues short of borrowing because we're tax capped in our county. So short of trying to borrow or increase through an ed fund, tax increase referendum, the only way really to increase fees is to start looking at things such as as student fees, activity fees, rentals of, you know, increasing the facility usage fees. We're still talking about those and we haven't brought a presentation tonight because that's one that we can do in March. It doesn't have a timeline such as the RIF notices have a timeline that by law, we have to know by, you know, our March 11th board meeting, who's on that RIF list. So we're starting with our staffing positions and then we can talk more about these later. But there's a potential for, even if we increase slightly those fees, there's a potential for another $100,000 in in possible revenues. But we'll have a more detailed presentation on the fees in March. Are there any questions or anything that needs to be reviewed?
Did you say that eight, did you say the eight teachers that are eligible to retire at this point? That so there would not be no ERO on them? Is that correct?
Correct. For one of them, there is a slight, a slight. We were looking at what are the parameters of who we can include in that eight. There are seven that there would be no ERO penalty at all. And then there is one that has a very slight, a very minimal ERO penalty. And again, that's a one-time payment, but we were not looking at, we do have some staff members that that would cost a bigger penalty if we didn't include them in that eight. We just talked about the the ones that don't incur, that we wouldn't incur a penalty for or a very small penalty, less than $10,000. And again, then it has to wash out to be a benefit financially to the district as well as one that can help, you know, help pull some of our RIF list off, you know, some of those names off of the RIF list and make sure that they have jobs for next year.
That's a voluntary program?
Yes, it would be because we can't force someone to retire and nor can we deny them retirement. So this would be something that what we're planning on doing is setting the parameters and saying, these are the people who are eligible. And we wouldn't list them necessarily by name, but we would say, you know, this is the category, these are the parameters. If you want to participate, you have to have, you know, not cost any ERO penalty or a small, you know, under $10,000. You would have to, you know, be this category, this parameter. And then we would spell out a formula. What we've started to do was to really find a way to make it very fair for every person. So and we've looked at a formula that would include some analysis of their years of service. So, you know, per year of service, there would be a dollar amount to to the to the district, their years of service to the district. So that's part of our calculation in that formula. And so what we'd like to do now is to present that specific data to those to those staff members to ask them if they're interested in pursuing that retirement bonus.
Aside from the cost savings, there is, there is a loss of, there's an exchange for the cost. I mean, I'm not going to say it's it's a terrible detriment to the students, but you're exchanging 25 years of teaching experience for a newly hired young teacher. And so there is a cost there too that shouldn't be minimized.
Right. Good point.
Let me address it, John. Actually, what with the analysis that they've done is that we could then keep some of the teachers that are already here. So we wouldn't necessarily be hiring new teachers to come in for those teachers that that would take the ERO. They would, some of that would be absorbed. And we would not be replacing those people per se. It would be a, they would go at part of that, part of that 20 point ahead. So board members, any more questions or comments on anything here? Because this is an action item tonight.
I know it's a very difficult process to go through. And one of the things that I'd like to to say is thank you to the administrators and those who participated in thinking outside of the box about these cuts. You know, the state, the lack of state funding and the impact that it's had on our district and other school districts cannot be minimized. Having said that, what I truly appreciate is that these cuts were in all areas. One of my concerns was that we not like cut a whole section of something, a whole programs in one area and leave programs intact in another area. And it was, I was very grateful to see that it was spread out amongst all the different areas.
Anything else? Alex, questions?
I appreciate how difficult it was for Carrie to go through this, but it's also difficult to think about voting on this too, I have to say.
Well, it is something that, as we all know, over the past years, we've never had to do something like this in the past. And we've had some unusual circumstances that have come up with state funding and some other issues. And we're not the only ones in this boat. It's statewide, basically. And if you've been reading the newspapers, you know, every every district and county has basically been going through the same process. So it's just our turn tonight.
Let me add that, you know, we've talked a lot about in previous board meetings, you know, since since I can remember, we've talked the past several months about the the fact that the state funding is is an issue. Obviously, that we're looking at pro-rations of potentially, since we're currently prorated at 89% of the general state or the foundation level that is in law this year, it's already hard enough on us because that's a number that you you try to plan for. You plan for having those, that 6119 per student and it's and it's prorated. So you, you know, you deal with it and you move forward. But beyond that, knowing that the proration may be a lot less, on top of the fact that there's possible pension reform, there's there's an increase to the district to have to pay for a part of pension. And we don't know what it will look like yet. We keep watching, you know, and just don't know specifically what that will look like. As well as, we're hearing a lot about sequestration. We've talked, we've heard at the federal level level about sequestration for, oh, about a year, year and a half now, we've heard that thrown out. And what it means to us as a district is that our Title I dollars are in jeopardy. Those are federal dollars that we receive every year. And those federal dollars, we have about, for to kind of give a perspective, we have about $300,000 in Title I dollars alone. And those are for at-risk students. Those are for, you know, learners who are at risk in the areas of reading or math. And so we typically use for those Title I dollars, we use those dollars to pay for our reading interventionists and reading support programs. And if that would be cut, you know, if we're looking at potential for that, those federal dollars to be in jeopardy, that's another additional impact to the district that you either, like with pre-K and transportation, you either not, you know, start to offer less or you cut back in other areas. And so it's always a big challenge for us as we hear more and more. And that has been, you know, people talk about the the proration of general state aid, but sometimes we forget that we actually, five or six years ago, we lost a lot of our our state funding through grants such as the reading improvement block grant. We received about $120,000 for several years in reading improvement block grants. And that was a statewide grant that just dried up. And we had, we used that as well to pay for reading interventionists. And so instead of cutting those positions, we absorbed them through the district. So when you look at those types of examples, we've absorbed a lot over the years. We've absorbed, you know, reading improvement block grant, textbook. Textbook is a really good example too, that we used to get a certain dollar amount per student and we would use those funds to buy new textbooks every year. And there was a certain list that we had, that we could use from the statewide, there was an approved list that we could order from. And we would always follow those rules and make sure that we did, you know, did all that they required us to do. But then that dried up. So there are lots and lots of little, I wouldn't call them little, but they're smaller grants. And our overall budget is a smaller grant, but it's still one that we keep absorbing. And the same thing happened for pre-K when we went to a competitive grant and when they stop, you know, either reduce the funding or, you know, minimize the funding, then in the future, then we have to pick up more costs. So as we've had those reductions, we've just continued to step up. And so we're we're trying to tell legislators that enough is enough. You know, this is time now to, you know, general state aid is is a lifeline for districts. And so when we start hearing, you know, that's mostly what we talk about when we hear from the legislators and we talk to the legislators, we talk a lot about general state aid because it's our lifeline. But there are lots of other things that have been cut along the way. And we feel like we've kind of, as districts, not just Belchadam, but lots of districts, we've just picked up those pieces. And to continue to cut is, becomes, that's why you're seeing in the papers that, you know, there are lots and lots of districts out there in the same position or worse than we are that are closing schools or cutting drastic numbers. And we're just at a point where we are all facing some of the same, the same issues. Yeah, pre-K was one that, GMS that I addressed pre-K. Pre-K was one that, you know, a couple of years back, we did see some of our our funds frozen in that grant, that pre-K grant. And what we decided to do, actually, what our board at the time decided to do is to go ahead and fund that. And actually, this board has said the same thing, that this is something that is that is critical to our young learners. Because these are our at-risk students who are, you know, our youngest students who really need to have some early intervention. And we know that the research shows how important pre-K programs are. So when you remember back to Levoyevich days, and he had said, pre-K for all. And he talked about having pre-K for all students. And that was a good concept, but it never really, it never really panned out for our district. We still have a- We still have an at-risk program. We never had more funding for pre-K. So what we did was, we actually had less than at that point because we were frozen. And then your increased costs go up, you know, your costs go up every year. And then we didn't have that additional dollars. But our board said at the time that priority is pre-K, that this is a priority for us and that we're going to continue to, to offer that program. So we kind of stepped up and offered, you know, more district local dollars to our pre-K program than we had in the past. This year, the same is true. Fortunately, last year, pre-K used to always be a formula-driven grant. You were just given a certain amount based on your population or based on your, your needs. Last year was the first year that, or two years ago, I think, was the first year that we had a competitive grant. So I, you know, we had to write for that grant and ask for the money. And we were able to receive those funds, which is good. But we're still not getting all that our, that our pre-K program costs us. So that's another one that we just, you know, the district keeps stepping up and, and taking on more because that's an area that we said, you know, to continue to fund because it's important for those early learners.
Any other comments, questions, board members, before we take a vote on this? Okay, then, as outlined in your board packet tonight, I made a motion to approve the budget reduction plan as presented in your board packet this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Alan. In a second, please.
I have a second motion.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, no, Betsy, what do you call her, please?
Yes, Carter.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Carling.
Yes.
Quatter.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Nusis.
Yes. Okay, moving along to instruction. We have update of elementary boundaries. John.
Well, this is another tough decision. And I don't have, I just want to update you. We're not going to take a vote on this. We have been studying the boundary changes. This is very difficult because I really want to be able to do this one time and one time only. What we keep, as a district, we keep getting notified of more and more subdivisions going in. For example, the Stout Farm, Mr. Lovely still, I mean, everyone would know where that's at. But I'm going to tell you, it's the north of the curve on Iron Bridge Road. The north of the curve is south of the lake. There are 104 lots being put into that area. So that'll all be GES. And then we just got notification today of Toronto Terrace. And that's off of, it's left off of North Cotton Hill right before you get to Hyde Park. Right there at the very edge, right across from Prairie State Bank. So that's about another 16 to 20 lots. So it's a lot smaller in size. And so when I say that I want to be able to do this one time, I mean, and I, and I understand, I was one of those subdivisions where my child in fourth grade got moved. So I completely understand this. And so we keep studying it. We've even talked about transition plans with the principals. So we're really talking about Lake Point South because two years ago, you, you cut that subdivision in half. Part of the subdivision went to GES, the other half went to Ball. So it's South, Lake Point and Crows Mill going back to Ball Elementary from Blumen Elementary. We also had a new idea of Manor Hill going from Ball to Chatham Elementary. And then we also have Route Four over to Park, Plummer to Walnut, going from GES to Chatham Elementary. So overall, we're talking about 149 students total. But we still want to study it just a little bit more. I also need to study incoming kindergarten numbers to see how many sections that's going to be. I have done the calculations and it is going to be that we're going to need to add two more elementary teachers due to these boundary changes. And that's because we are maxed right now at two of our elementaries, at Ball and Blumen Elementary in third grade. And so it shows that we're going to have to add. But I'm still studying addresses. So I don't have a recommendation tonight, but I wanted to keep you up to date on that. Part of the transition plan would be, because, you know, kids are affected, and this is why I only want to do this one time, is to do student visits, to have the counselors involved with the families, to do like an open house or ice cream social and to have a buddy system. And so when we do those student placements, that those children are comfortable in those transitions to a new building. So that is something we're looking at. So I just wanted to update you. We will have a final recommendation in March so we can notify families. I have, the next one is Five Essentials. Email has gone out to the parents. Right now, the University of Chicago has the wrong demographics for our district. So I don't know how many parents have taken it. But Betsy sent out that link and we'll send out a reminder to the parents. We only need 30% of our parent population to take that survey in order to see the results. We need 50% of our staff and each principal, building principal built in time in their schedules in the last three weeks to get that accomplished. So the staff have been given time. And then grade six through 12 students have taken it, or are taking it. I know at the high school, it's going to take a little longer. And we had to build that time and take away from instruction. This is a new state mandate, so it can be reported on our school improvement report card, sorry, our school report card in the fall. So it's just a new mandate. We're talking about 15 to 25 minutes of instruction time lost, grade six through 12, in order to take a state survey.
Would you explain what the survey was?
Um, the survey talks about your safety. It has five components. And it talks about the instruction. It talks about building safety. It talks about relationship building, about extracurricular and programming. And so...
It's based on research?
And it's based all on research from 20 years.
The University of Illinois at Chicago, that, that they did on the five things that makes a school great. You know, the research that, these are the, the essential pieces of a great system. And so the, the survey asks those questions and then so we should be looking at. You know, it's a lot about performance of principals, you know, how, how they feel in their building, students.
Very simple questions in kid-friendly language. Some of the, there's some similarities. The University of Chicago's been doing it for the last 20 years. I'm not for sure that that's made Chicago schools any better. But I think there's some good research when you come out of it. If, you know, if you want your climate and culture building teams to study the information, I think that would be good. There are some things that I would change. For example, I wouldn't ask, and I still don't understand this, and I've expressed this at state meetings, why they require the teachers to provide a, a staff email. I don't get it. They don't ask the parents to do that. So I don't understand why teachers are required to do that. So, I mean, those are some, there's some flaws to it, but they're going to need to iron it out. Just an update on that. And summer school, I'm going to have Mr. Becker and Dr. Cox quickly go over that if they can reach it up here somehow.
Thank you. Good evening. We're here to present information on summer school 2013. We plan to continue to offer similar offerings as we have the past several years. Some of those are for remediation, others are for advancement. You can see the initial projections based on what we've done in the past as far as the number of staffing that we'll need. Currently, we try to offer English I, II, III and IV for remediation purposes, consumer ed, driver's ed, health, government, Algebra A, B and Algebra I, as well as a seventh and eighth grade opportunity for students that might need remediation. We've tried to combine most of our programming to be the month of June, which would be the third through the 26th from 8:00 to noon. And in July, we would have a section of possibly English and Algebra, July 8th through the 31st. One big adjustment this year will be to move summer school to Glenwood Middle School, which will help to save costs with the HVAC system. Additionally, we will try to provide transportation for students who need it. And all of the current staffing patterns will be based on enrollment. And we will review those numbers as they come in, which probably will not occur until the end of May. One additional increase would be the fee for summer school. We currently charge $125 per semester. And based on some of the research that we did with other schools in the area and across the state, we believe that a $150 fee for summer school is reasonable. Again, students that are in need or who might be on free and reduced lunch, we do offer the opportunity for scholarships and payment plans. And since I've been in that position, we've never turned somebody away due to financial concerns. Mrs. Cox, would you like to comment on the seventh and eighth grade?
Very minor with the seventh and eighth grade. Our summer school is just for remediation purposes only. We are currently monitoring our students in teams and have sent out our initial letters with that. We always assume that it will be a very small number that will be attending. And for the middle school, it is a non-fee for our students because the students who would be attending would be those students who are in fear of retention only.
Any questions regarding summer school for 2013? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a, yeah, this is a, action item.
Action item.
I mean, no questions. I need a motion then to approve the summer school coursework and timelines as presented this evening.
Still move?
Thank you, Alan. In a second, please. Thank you, John. Betsy, call roll, please.
Yep. Cox.
Yes.
Carling.
Yes.
Quatter.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel. Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Nusis.
Yes. Next, we have some discussion on CACC.
This was a, a conversation that John and I actually were talking about what the future is for CACC. And, you know, as we all know, that there's been some, some media on 186 and whether or not they're going to continue to use CACC and to send students to CACC. And their latest conversation was, the most recent was that they were going to go ahead and send students for this year. Beyond that, we just, we don't know. So it, on, you know, the board has, at CACC, we've talked about, you know, what it would look like if, if another school district, especially one as large as 186, pulled out. And do we need to have some conversation about that? John serves on, on the board as well for our board members as a representative board member. So I'll just kind of turn the mic to, to John to have some conversation.
I, I wanted to bring everybody up to date. I, I've been the volunteer from this board at CACC for the past three and a half years. In part because the meetings are close to my house and it was easy to volunteer because it's in the evenings. I, I always feel, I, I know some of, some of you guys put in so many hours volunteering, especially Jim, and hours here, I feel a little guilty sometimes that I can't do a lot of daytime hours. So this was my volunteer opportunity to do something that I, I knew I could make. But I have to say, in the, in the, in the almost four years now, I've kind of gotten attached to CACC. They, they serve a, a real purposeful role for all the participating school districts. And to some extent, this is a broader conversation than just our school board. This is a conversation for all 14 participating school districts in this region. And unfortunately, it's a conversation that's just not being, being had very much. Now, 186 has roughly about half of the students there. That's about half of the three to four million dollar budget there at, at CACC. But I thought I'd catch us up on our current numbers. We, um, this year, this, this school year, we have, it started out with 84 students at CACC. At $1,800 per student of tuition that we've, we've kind of transferred to CACC. That's a total of $151,000. In addition to which, we, we pay a set operating funds amount. And that's based on our own home district enrollment. Based on our district enrollment, we pay $135,000. So we pay approximately this year $286,000 to CACC. Now, a, a, as we've struggled with our budget here, CACC is struggling with their budget. Historically, the, the career centers received a lot of their funding from state and federal grants. And as, as everything else has gone the last 20 years, a lot of that, a lot of that grant funding is dry, is kind of drying up. And they're depending more and more on basically the participating school districts who are, who are responsible for this. Mr. Gilliam, our previous superintendent, had been concerned about the future of CACC, especially if 186 were to, were to pull out, although I don't, I don't think that's going to happen. You, you don't know. But it, it turned out that the governance at CACC wasn't, well, let me, let me just backtrack and say that the governance is kind of hard to understand. There, there's an executive council made up of seven superintendents who are kind of chosen and represent for a couple of years the participating districts. They basically monitor, they meet monthly and monitor the, the kind of monthly happenings and the budget at CACC. There is a board of control, which ultimately makes the final decision on things. But in general, it, it only meets three or four times a year and is made up of the volunteer representatives from the school districts. And as it turns out, much of the time, there's not, there's not a representative from every district. In, in addition to which, that board of control really should be talking about that future of CACC, or at least kind of the visionary thing. So with the help of the new director over there, who's really a sharp guy, Bob Klingberg, has kind of helped us, helped us as a, as a board kind of shift a little bit in our, in our thinking in terms of what are, how can we help CACC in the long run? How can we, how can we keep it viable? So we've talked about restructuring a little bit, moving to three meetings a year, one of which would be more of a strategic planning meeting, one of which would be more of a review of goals meeting. Some of those changed. And, and one of the reasons I'm going to bring this up is because I may or may not be a member of this board. So you may have a new member as a, as a representative at, at CACC in the, in the coming future. But there's going to probably be need, need to be a change in the governance agreement at CACC, which would involve a vote by all the participating school boards. At the same time, we were working on some discrepancies between the, the governance document and the policies at CACC. And we spent a fair amount of time kind of identifying the policies that Mr. Klingberg will kind of have to refresh and, and make consistent with the, the goals of the future. So there will be more. My hope is, is that there will be a, a, a meeting in the fall and a meeting in the spring that will be better attended by participating school districts. And that, and that a tradition will become where, where after that meeting, those representatives or the, or superintendents will bring back to their boards twice a year as, as an agenda item, kind of an update on where CACC is going. So I, I have to say, I'm kind of optimistic. We've made some progress on the future. That doesn't minimize the, the concerns that everybody has financially about CACC. In the end, this past year, we've had 84 students out there. And I think it's, it's an essential aspect of education to provide to those kids who really need it. And I think every district in this area has some kids who need that, that focused education. Anybody got any questions for me?
What's the number, John, of difference between enrollment in the last few years? Can you just address enrollment pattern?
Well, let me say that, that two or three years ago, we voted for, we kind of voted, I think, kind of for a year to cap it at 50. But, and even I noticed af, towards, when that, when that fiscal year came around, we actually had like 55 students out there. I think the trouble for a counselor is, is if you are going to cap that number, what do you do with that, you know, 51st student who also needs to be out there? How do you, how do you tell him no? Or how do you wait which students could go or which students can, or which programs out there? For ours, I think the agricultural program for our kids is one of the number one programs out there. But, but, so how would you, if you do cap it, how would, how would you deal with that? The other thing to understand is that, that there's a fixed cost. This year, we had out there of $135,000, which we got to pay regardless of whether we got one kid out there or, or 50 kids out there. We're still paying that $135,000. In addition to which, we're a part owner of that multi-million dollar building out there. So you, you don't want to give up on that facility. At the same time, every extra student you send out there is, is an additional $1,800 of tuition. However, that's half a day out here. If, if they were to stay in this district, here, you're, you're still having to fund the teachers for half a day of education from here too. So it's not a pure, and, and I think that's where 186 is, is kind of, kind of taking a second look at this and saying, well, if we don't, if... for half a day of education from here, too. So it's not a pure, and I think that's where 186 is, is kind of, kind of taking a second look at this and saying, well, if we don't, if, the kids are going to have to be educated. So, so that I, I think, the good news is, CACC will be here for, and for the future. And I think there's just going to be more work in making sure how we keep that facility up to date and what programs are really relevant for that facility, too.
Well, thanks, John. Appreciate all the hard work, again, the board does, that you do out there. It's a tough situation and I don't exactly where that whole facility's going and what the future brings on it. But it is a valuable opportunity for a lot of our students. Appreciate your hard work. See, move on to financial again, and 10:02 is our financial, our, I'm sorry, our cash flow analysis. Thank you.
I'm not going to do that now. The audit was presented earlier, but we didn't actually have a motion to accept it as presented, so.
Need a motion then to present the audit findings as presented to, on your board back tonight?
I'll move to accept.
Thank you, John. In a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Linda. Betsy, call roll, please.
Harling?
Yes.
Quetter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weiselman?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. The first document, Betsy, if you pulled the PDF, that one. Yep. This is just a reminder, this was shared last meeting as well. This is just an analysis that had been done with our partners at PMA. And the red is an area where the cash flow for the district would dip below what is needed to pay bills at that particular time. And it's looking like, again, as early as late March and definitely into April and parts of May, depending on when some of the early tax money will start coming again. And also on state payments, when those might flow. So this is a visual, just a reminder that I'll have some more information, some more detail in March as we get closer to that, what the numbers actually look like. So I'll have a further report for you on that. Then if we can go to the PowerPoint. Is that already open?
Okay.
All right, you just go to the next slide. This is just a comparison of where we're at. You've already approved the revenues and expenditure report earlier, but this is comparing where we were at in the operating funds from a year ago in the blue to where we're at now in the red. Some are up a little bit, which is good, but is the primary operations for us is really out of the ed fund, and that's significantly down. The state is currently behind by $850,000, and a majority of that is in the ed fund. They're over two and a half more months behind on payments on that. We think it could stretch to four before some of that even starts coming in. So that accounts for some of that, but we are certainly down more now in the ed fund than we were a year ago.
Can I ask a question, Pam?
Yep.
In that, and that's a cumulative effect over the last several years, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, if, if funding had been what it should have been, or what, what they told us it would be, would we be up towards that $3.5 million now?
I think it would be a lot closer, absolutely. We continue to have to fund programs that we are due money from the state, just for example, that are delayed continuously until the next fiscal year, for example. And so you're playing catch-up at some point, but you've already incurred the cost. So, so this is just a visual to let you see where your funds were a year ago versus where they are now in those main operating funds at this point a year ago. Okay. This is a, again, from the audit, revenues for FY12, broken out by percent, local, flow through, state and federal. And you can see we rely primarily on local funds. Okay, next one. This is in the ed fund alone, expenses for FY12. And again, primarily, as Superintendent Van Alstine pointed out, this year's budget is 1%. Last year's budget came in, well, actually expenses came in at about 78% between salaries and benefits. So the largest portion of your budget is coming in those two areas. This is a chart, again, using the software and data from the state, compiling all of our AFRs historically, back several years, and then projecting some expenses forward and some trends forward based on the way you've been, what you've been doing. The green line is your fund balance. So you can see that as early as 2014, you'd actually have negative funds, which is next year. So we have to change, and you've already taken action tonight, but this is another visual reminder of the action that you took, why it was needed tonight. This, this breaks it down just specifically into the ed fund, the O and N fund, and transportation fund. Again, gives you the trend line. You can see the ed fund, you know, drastically going down. We have to turn that around and get that ed fund going back up, so that we're increasing our funds every year. This is the foundation level. Again, this number was pointed out earlier. The top chart in all blue shows statute by statute what the fund, foundation level is and what we should be, our general state aid is calculated against. If it was funded fully, you can see it hasn't been raised since fiscal year 2010. That's the last time there was an increase. However, the chart below shows what actual GSA of the state, this district received based on those dollars. The reason I highlight 2002 and 2012, that's the last time we were receiving this type of money. So we were increasing every year for a while, and then it slowly started to dip. And I'll show then on the next slide in just a minute what that percentage was. We had 99% reduction, then we had, now we're down to 89% this year. So we're losing less general state aid than we're actually entitled to. We're not getting everything we're owed. So not only is it staying level, costs are going up, we're getting less. And the amount of money we're getting this year is equivalent to what we received 10 years ago. And this is, again, using those numbers, there was 99% proration, very minimal, in fiscal year 11, 95% proration in fiscal year 12, 89% this year, and we're hearing projections could be as low as 80% for next year. Oh, related to that, as you know, we do have a line of credit. It was established last year, we had to dip into it just briefly at the end of the fiscal year. It was projected that it was more likely this year. I mentioned that as early as March and definitely probably April, we'll have to be tapping into that line of credit. As I said, I'll have more information for you in March. But one, I may be recommending that we seek an increase in that current line of credit. I'll know more in March whether that's what we're going to need, just in case. And secondly, I probably will definitely be recommending that the board considers action to seek an additional line of credit for FY14 and FY15, which would require us to go out for bid from the banks, just so that you have that for future years. Because right now, this one is set to expire this June. So just as information for your March meeting, that will be very likely an item for your action.
What's the amount now?
Current amount's $3.5 million. I hope that's enough, but we'll know more next month.
And remember that those are tax anticipation warrants, so those are paid out first. But if you'll go back, Betsy, will you show that one cash flow analysis again? That, that's exactly what, when Patrick talks about there being an issue with, you know, obviously with the cash flow, the bigger concern to us is the fact that the red grows, you know, as, as we have less and less to do short-term investments, we have more and more borrowing over time. And, and that's exactly what he's talking about with the tax anticipation warrants, that, that taking out a line of credit to make your payroll is a problem. And that, that's a huge indicator of district health, that you have to take out a line of credit, even if it's short-term borrowing, to have to make payroll and accounts payable. So you have choices you have to make at that point. Can you delay your accounts payable? But then, you know, when you delay your payments, you can't delay your, you know, payments on payroll. And when you start to do that with accounts payable, then nobody wants to do business with you. So, you know, this is, this is a huge problem and a big indicator for us in the short term, even. We know that there are bigger pictures with our, with our reserves in ed fund and our operating funds. When we look over time, we know that there's a big picture that is a big concern. But part of our big concern is this short-term issue of the fact that we can't make payroll, we, and we have to go out for a line of credit. So that, all of that paints the picture of, we have to do something now. So, you know, we appreciate your support in, in making those reductions, even though they're, they're difficult to do.
Would it be possible in March to get the $3 million reduction applied to this chart? So we see what it does. Does it reduce the red?
Yeah, Patrick, we can, can we apply? Yeah, we can bring that, yeah.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Patrick. Moving along to new business. We have Airmark Uniform, Mr. Murphy. You like a bite, Dave?
Tonight, I'd like to make a recommendation to the administration.
That wasn't a question.
Tonight, I'm bringing before you a recommendation that the administration accepted revised agreement with Airmark Corporation. In doing so, we're, we're looking at about a $70,000 reduction in expenses. They're not painless, but we're looking at all our service agreements in the light of making reduction. This is a fairly large one for service and, in the custodial arena and also in the Cooks arena. We've also asked for some changes in their basic T and Cs to cap their, our annual expenses at $40,000 with this, this corporation. They've agreed to that. In addition to this, we still have expenses. We've asked them not to increase or decrease without prior approval any inventories. We've had some issues with inventory increases and decreases that were made at the building, and it was tough to control that. And as a result, we've seen some increases in expenditures. So tonight, we're asking that we, they accept this revised agreement. We're in the second year of a five-year agreement. The company has agreed to renegotiate at this level. Any questions?
Hey, Dave, we're, we're saving $70,000, but what are we, what's the cost? We're saving 70, what's our final cost, then?
40.
Total? So it was 110?
Yeah, 40 is our total. It's a new contract.
And it was 110, then?
It was 110.
Okay.
The next item I'm bringing before you tonight is, we got a vote on that first.
Any questions, board members? Need a motion then to approve the acceptance of this revised agreement with Airmark Uniform Services as presented.
I'll make that motion. Good job, Dave.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Betsy, call roll, please.
Quetter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weiselman?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hey, Dave.
The next item I'm bringing forward tonight is, we did put a bid out for window replacement of ball elementary. This is in the old course in the 1967 wing, 1932 wing. Those, those pieces of the building will stay. And, and because they're single-pane glass, we want to go with a more highly efficient glass, reduce our energy consumption. Gardner aluminum glass was a little better, and tonight we're recommending that we accept their bid. You can see that the architect's estimate was $72,000, and they came in at $56,446. So we're recommending tonight that we enter into an agreement with aluminum, aluminum glass.
Is this money out of the bond referendum?
That's correct.
This is health, life, safety money?
That was referendum money.
Referendum money, okay, correct, got you. Okay. Any questions? Need a motion then to approve the recommendation to use Gardner glass, O and N glass for $56,446. Still moving. Thank you, Alan. In a second, please.
I'll second.
Or Linda, that was you? Okay. Betsy, call roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weiselman?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harling?
Yes.
Quetter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
We have a couple of first readings of a couple of new policies, so.
Correct. Tonight, we're bringing forward the first reading on policy 148P. The AP actually is an administrative procedure that adds definitions to a policy by defining the regulations and current laws that support the policy. It gives us a reference point for policy and understanding what's behind our policy. It also defines the participant in the policy, such as the director of facilities, has a number of areas here where he participates fully. Our safety and security manager participates in some of these areas also. So we're recommending tonight the, the first reading that we adopt this.
See if, any questions? No, this is informational only. It will be back on the consent agenda on March 11. And then you've got one more?
No.
Oh, you've got, okay.
Well, both 460 and 4170, we take our recommendations from the Illinois Association of School Boards, they have their policies. And Dr. Quetter and Mr. Harling serve on our policy committee, so I appreciate them coming in and going back and forth by email. We do have one more, it's 470, the AP, and we quickly just added this to the operational services. This is known as the Zacks Law. And it would be that Dave and Randy both, in their positions as directors, would work with the athletic director in making sure that our soccer goals are safe. It's movable soccer, and it was a new law that was implemented. And we, we abide by this law already, so we've seen it put it on books.
Informational only.
Yes. Again, those are informational only, they'll be on the consent agenda on March 11. Next, we have our communications, I'm sorry, yeah, roundtable, anybody?
This was a conversation, again, that Dawn and I had regarding policies and district procedures. And a prime example of, of the conversation that we kind of started was that, where are those administrative procedures? And in terms of, are they in the board policies? And for the most part, there are quite a few that are in the board policies, the administrative procedures. There used to be a manual, a hard copy manual, that also were extra forms and things. And, you know, we kind of had a little bit of conversation about district policy, administrative procedures that apply to district policies. We're trying to get as many of those in forms and things like that on our website as possible, and it's kind of a work in progress that we continue to do. But there are quite a few in your policies that you approve that have administrative procedures attached to them. So, I don't know, do you want to address anything on that? Okay.
Just to thank Carrie and Jill and all the administrators who work on, I don't think people see some of this behind-the-scenes work that goes on, just, and for Alan and I, just kind of separating the idea of policy and then procedure and trying to keep the board up at the kind of policy level and then letting the administrators do all their work. But, but it is a lot of work, and I need to compliment everybody and all the work that they put in. Some of these things just seem so mundane when you, when we come and they get presented and we approve them, but somebody's put hours of thought, research into some of the, whether they're policies or procedures that we approve. And so I thank you all.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up is that we had a meeting last week with our representative from the ISB, Larry Dirks. We, the board and superintendent have been meeting, this was our second meeting, to set up some Board of Education goals and also goals for the superintendent. And we've, we don't have another meeting scheduled, possibly in the future, but we're well on the way to set some of those things and kind of making some changes. The 2020 initiative that's been here for about five, six, seven years, something like that, we're trying to update that so that, because most of the things that, on that 2020 initiative have already been accomplished, so we're trying to set new goals for the district and for the Board of Education, for the superintendent. So it's an ongoing process. Okay. On the future meeting dates, tomorrow night, there's a meeting, ISB, our, our division meeting, it's in Warrensburg Latham, if anybody's, is going to attend that. Six o'clock for the business. Six o'clock for the business meeting. We have, March 11th, we have another board meeting, that's our Personnel Board meeting. March 18th is our regular board meeting, and also into April 22nd is our April regular board meeting. Spring break, March 25th, April 1st. And...
Negotiation.
Pardon me?
Negotiation.
Yes, and we have a, that is on the 13th, Lynda, is that? Okay. March 13th, we have another negotiation session with our Ball Chav ESP Union, and that's six o'clock, something like that. Okay? Anything else? Anybody on the board? Any other comments, questions, anything you want to add today?
The date of the candidate forum is?
Is, the date of the candidate forum is the 21st of March. At GIS, and there's also a, there's a bill at the library, too, there's a candidate forum on the 19th, okay. Just Chatham Races, yes. Well, but school board, too. So next couple of months later. Anything else? Okay. We're at that time of the meeting here that citizens have an opportunity to address the board concerning any topic. Anybody wish to address the board tonight? Okay, come on. And we have a lot of people here tonight, so I'd like to limit it to five minutes, and please state your name when you get up to the podium, and you need the mic, yes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larissa Hanson, and I'm just here as a concerned parent, and I guess, and many of you know that I've been concerned in the past or made some statements in the past regarding budgeting issues, regarding a couple of different issues. But my concern today, before I start, is just to say that I think, based on my track record and working with the board, I think you guys know that I respect and have a great deal of respect for everybody on the board, everybody in the administration, and the tough decisions that you make. But at the same time, I really feel strongly that these are tough issues, and they require tough questions to be asked. And I'm disappointed with a couple of things that happened and wanted to share that, along with feedback that I've gotten from other parents in the community, and parents who don't send their children here in the community, and why they don't send their children here. And I think that's important for us as a community to kind of address, that that, in my opinion, those percentages of people who choose not to send their children to this school is going to impact us negatively, and I believe they're going up. So from an outside perspective, I have a couple of observations. First of all, when I did the math, even with these cuts, we fall short of breaking even. We can say on paper we're going to break even, but when you add in things like teacher incentive program to retire, those are dollars that are going to have to be spent in the short term to get a gain that is going to be a long-term gain potentially, maybe, but how much is that? And that's not factored in here. So even with all these cuts, which I think are a detriment to our students, I don't know that we're really going to break even. So there's going to have to be some other cuts down the road, and this isn't the end of the story, and I think we all know that. In addition to that, we haven't looked at income, and I know that in this slide, there was some mention of income, but nowhere on the board's site before today, when I looked just before I came here, was there any mention of any income. And realistically, I don't know that the income can be controlled just by this. I was on the referendum committee, I know there's a lot of people who would object to a tax increase, but I don't think that we should just be ignoring the fact that this money isn't just going to fall out of the sky for us, and we know that the state's not going to allow it. The thing that bothers me about, when we talk about the state's cuts, the state, if they account for 32% of our revenue and they've cut their budget by 10%, that means 3.2% of our income has been cut of the total budget, the total expenses. So 3.2% of a total budget means that we have, and the numbers show it, in, starting in 2010, this district was spending more money than it was bringing in. Yes, the state at the same time started cutting the budget, but the two don't offset each other, and so again, in order to balance this budget, there needs to be talk of additional income. Having said that, there are obvious ways, and it's kind of ironic, and I appreciate the Airmark is a perfect example, even though I'm sure you worked hard to renegotiate that, if we're paying $110,000 in a single contract that can be renegotiated in a single year down to $40,000, there's issues there. And how many of those contracts have been looked at? In addition, have you considered the cost-benefit analysis to some of the programs that we've implemented whole-scale district-wide that aren't impacting all those students district-wide in the same manner? It may even be a detriment to some of those students. Things like the literacy program and the math numeracy program, I know they're important for some students, but what is the cost that is associated with that program, and how is it benefiting all of our students? And maybe scaling it back, changing its focus, needs to be addressed in some instance. I'm very concerned about my students and how they're going to be impacted in the future. I look at, I hear things like the general study halls are going to have non-certified teachers, so if I've got a student who's in a calculus class, he's going to have an aide basically supervising that study hall. No offense to the aides, but I don't even know if I could help them with calculus, he needs a math teacher to go to. But the math teachers at the high school are going to have six classes with one planning period, so how is a student supposed to get help there? I just think that that whole aspect needs to be thought through. I look at AP classes and look at the 15-person cap and wonder if they're not going to be cut down. The final thing that I guess I wanted to say that I was really disappointed to see was this comment on the presentation that the superintendent made that said, this is the one time that staff input had to be minimal, because the potential reductions included reducing their positions and/or their peers' positions. I just, to me, that is putting the cart before the horse. We've got administrators who had to look at cutting administrators' peers' positions, why weren't the teachers consulted? And the reality is that the teachers are the ones closest to these things going on. The teachers are the ones who see what programs maybe aren't as beneficial as you might have thought they would be. The teachers are the ones who see the impact of these cuts on a daily basis, and I feel that they should have been involved in these decisions to a much greater level than they were. And I hope that in future decisions, because like I said, we all know that there will be more conversation, that you will consider that the teachers have more insight perhaps than some of the administrators into what things could be cut, what things could be kind of adjusted to save money, and also potentially bring in income. I look at extracurricular activities, programs where we could be selling additional concessions, that sort of thing, and they're just kind of ignored or shoved off to the side, like they don't mean anything, but an extra $10,000 or $20,000 could sure help. So those were all my observations. And again, I have, like I said, the greatest respect for you, I think these were tough decisions to make, but I just hope you consider some of my points.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Susan? You want the mic, please?
Oh, okay.
And again, we appreciate everybody who wants to address the board, but we, in this kind of a forum, it's not something that we can do question and answer for. And, yes, five minutes, so.
I'm Susan Worley, I'm a parent of a Glenwood High School student. I'm asking, if not tonight, then the next board meeting, please advise the parents, the taxpayers, the staff, exactly how much Glenwood Elementary School costs, including hard costs and soft costs. We have not yet heard what the total number is, and that total number dramatically reduced the education fund, and we need to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody around the forum?
Yep.
Okay. Here you go. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Montessor, mother of three children in the district, and I just have some concerns, I don't know if maybe you can answer them for me tonight. With the loss of the team leaders and the teachers, I was wondering, how are they going to have time when we have new teachers coming in? How are they going to be coached? How are the teachers going to have the extra time to come up with the plans that are needed for the students? And when will they be able to meet with parents? That was my first question. And then when we are losing some of the extra sports, I'm wondering how much of reduction in athletic fees we're looking at, and how that's going to impact us. And then I also have a concern with our paraprofessional staff supervising study halls. Wanted to know if they're going to receive any training? What exactly qualifications are needed to oversee study calls, especially with, you know, high school students or students who have special challenges or students who need extra help during their study hall period? What help would be available to them? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and if there's nothing else from the board members, any motion, your adjournment, yeah? Thank you. A second, please? Thank you. I'll pray we stay out.